Welcome to the Red Hook Town Board Meeting of January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you very much. For the folks at home, if you'd be kind enough to zoom in on the screen there, we can show them what's on tonight's agenda. This being the first meeting of the year, we'll be doing our annual reorg, resolution and reappointments to some of the various committees and boards. If you could scroll down, Patrick. Yeah. To the agenda items, great. We also annually take a look at and discuss and approve highway expenditures each year as recommended by the highway superintendent. We're also going to finally, after many months of work, approve a contract to replace the Sawkill Bridge. This is a primarily grant-funded project. We also each year have to take a look at the various options for health insurance plans for the employees here at Town Hall. And then we are taking a look again at taking additional steps, working towards trying to understand what the options are to improve drainage in the forest park development. And in particular, we're starting with a couple of roadways there. We're having a brief discussion of some of the courses that will be offered at the Association of Towns. If you were here at the last meeting, you know that your local electeds take continuing ed. And that comes in the form of a conference in February and other courses that are offered throughout the year. And without further ado, we will move right into our agenda items. Let's do a few announcements. We have yet again another Repair Cafe coming up this Saturday at the Red Hook Community Center. And we want to thank all those coaches and volunteers. If you have something in your house that you would like repaired, check with them. It's between ten a.m. and one p.m. And what's a whoops, sorry. What's also new is that childcare is being offered during that period. So if you want to bring your kids, it's a wonderful way to introduce them to reuse and recycle, and in this case, repair. So that's ten a.m. on Saturday, January fourteenth. Next up, we want to let you know we have some info sessions coming up. In fact, had one last night, two more, one remotely and one in person. And that's for our community choice aggregation program. As you may recall, here at the town of Red Hook, we did a lot of work to ensure that there were a couple of programs that people could join in order to further the goal of producing clean energy supply here in our community. And this one, this program, which is being arranged by Hudson Valley Community Power, is really a replacement for the remainder of the contract period that was unexpired with our previous contract. If you recall, it was a fixed rate program just for the supply portion of your energy. It was very successful. If you were here for the budget review, you probably heard me say that in many cases, through either this program or through the Community Solar Project, which launched in two thousand and nineteen, that some of our residents have been able to save more money than they actually pay in town taxes because of some of these programs. So this is an opportunity to continue this now that the program was interrupted because the provider did not perform all three years of the contract. I will say, however, that it's not likely that you will see that magnitude of savings going forward with a future contract. But if you want to find out more about it, the twenty-first is a Zoom of participation. We'll put this up on the website. And the twenty-fourth is here in person at Town Hall, both at seven p.m. And next up is Historic Red Hook. Would like to let you know that they are having a different event coming up Friday on January twentieth, date night at the Elmendorf Inn. And you can get to enjoy some of your friends and neighbors at our wonderful historic resource, the Elmendorf Inn. Okay. Sure. Okay. Next up is the Supervisors Report. It's very limited this month. As you know, we're closing out the December period. We'll give you just the balances if you do well. Thank you, Patrick. We started the beginning of the month with an opening balance of a little over nine million, nine million and ninety-two thousand. We had receipts of slightly over a million, dispersments of slightly over one point one million, leaving a closing balance of nine million and twelve thousand dollars. And in February, you'll get the annual report of the fiscal condition for the township. And once again, hopefully, we'll show that we're in a stronger position than we were in the previous year. And that is a continuation of the last seven years or so. We only have one budget adjustment that's being proposed. We'll have more coming up in the second meeting of the month. This is a budget adjustment proposal to appropriate money for the signs necessary to implement the truck route law. And so what I'm going to ask at this point is if there are no questions or comments, would somebody like to move to approve both the Supervisors' Report and the Budget Adjustment?
So moved.
Thank you, Christine. Is there a second?
Second.
Well, I think that's Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. We also have a Town Clerks' Report. Patrick, thank you very much.
And the Town Clerks' Report for the period of December first to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Total local shares remitted to the supervisor, four thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-three cents. Amount to New York State Agriculture and Markets for the spay neuter program, thirty-one dollars. Amount paid to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, forty-five dollars. Amount paid to New York State Racing and Wagering for games of chance bell jar license, fifteen dollars. Amount paid to New York State Environmental Conservation for hunting and fishing licenses, fourteen dollars and seventeen cents. Total state, county, and local revenues, four thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Thank you very much, Deanna. Is there a motion to accept the Town Clerks' Report?
So moved.
Thank you, Christine. A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Okay. Public comments. Is there anyone from the public who would like to make some comments this evening? Okay. Here in none, why don't we jump right in on the agenda? Annual reorg. We have a resolution. I think it's safe to say it's Resolution Number One of two thousand and twenty-three.
Yes.
Relating to annual reorg. And it details the meeting dates. And for the folks at home, we have been for years meeting on the second Tuesday and on the fourth Wednesday of each month. You can find out all the information, meeting schedules and topics and agenda items on our website. And you can sign up as we remind you for notifications. So you can have all that delivered to you by email or even by text message if you'd like. So that's seven thirty. Our official newspaper is scheduled again to be the Phippsy Journal. The institutions are detailed where we hold the taxpayers' funds and salaries for each one of the elected officials. We're detailed in the resolution, undertaking, who can sign checks, so on and so forth. And it also details the various policies, procurement, investment, ethics, and fund balance, and when they were last adopted. Town Board members, any questions, any comments, any proposed items? Here in none, I move Resolution Number One relating to annual reorganization.
Second.
Thank you, Christine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks very much. May we take a few minutes now and go through the committee and board lists to do some reappointments? We'll just spend a few minutes on this and then we'll hopefully finalize the rest of them at our second meeting of the month. And anyone who has not yet reappointed, of course, will be a holdover until such time. So going down the list. Patrick, if you could scroll, please. Thank you very. Yeah, that's all good. Town Board Appointments. I see on the front page, Director of Purchasing. Obviously, we don't have that position anymore. And a Representative, I believe Eric Ryback is the one we should put there right now. We should make that change. Are there any other proposed changes, folks? I noticed emergency interim successors. We have myself, our Highway Superintendent, Teresa Burke, Julia Solomon, William Hamel. But we should have you, Jacob, also on that list. And let's add you there. All the other appointments, Supervisors' Appointments. Deputy Supervisor would be Bill Hamel. Budget Officer, myself, by law. Secretary, Patrick O'Shea. Town Historian, Emily Major. Town Clerk Appointments. No changes there, right, Deanna?
No.
Okay. Highway Superintendent Appointments, no changes there, Teresa? Yeah, okay. And then the other employees are detailed. One changed there, Connor Boran gives no longer with us. He's back in college, if I may, but we'll say that. And that's cool. We'll make that change. On the second page. Thank you, Patrick. Let's note the change in the water district operator and the company name. It's now C three N D. So we can make that change as well. And then on mileage, mileage has changed. The I R S rate, I think, is sixty-five-five. We want to make that change. Let's go to Town Board Liaison to Town Departments page.
Sixty-five or fifty-nine?
Sixty-five.
It was in the annual.
Resolution, yeah. Town Board Liaisons to Town Departments. Folks, obviously, we'll take out purchasing. Christine Kane will take that out of there since that's not a separate department now. Board members, any changes? Are you good with what you have? We can take that. Well, that's down to Boarding Committees right now. I'm up at the top there.
Well, the it's.
Oh, it is. It is, isn't it? My apologies. Yep, let's take that out, shall we, for now?
Yep.
My apologies. Okay. Any changes? Proposed changes? Everybody good with that? Okay. Boarding Committees. Some of these are dormant right now. We can tackle that at our next meeting. But are there any proposed changes for the ones that are not?
Well, we should add the Housing Committee again to the list.
Yeah.
Then put Jacob and myself.
Julia, do you want to remain on the CAC here?
I don't need necessarily to remain on the CAC. You go to that free right there.
Yeah. Yeah, so we can remove Julia from the Conservation Advisory Council. And then there'll be the two of us for.
Okay. Any other proposed changes? Okay. Let's go to the next page if we could, Patrick. Thank you. Town Board Committee Appointments, obviously, we'll change the year, two thousand and twenty-three, up top. Let's tackle agriculture and open space advisory. We'll be doing three appointments, I believe.
I have not heard no. I haven't heard yes either.
Okay. Well, I have been in touch with Marianne Johnson. So I think we can go ahead and make those reappointments and keep her as chair for a year. That would be Michael Robertson for period ending two thousand and twenty-four, Pete Hubble for same period ending, and Marianne Johnson as a chair. And I'd be happy to make that motion. Would there be a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. Assessment or Review Board. We are still looking for someone to join that. If you have a particular expertise in real estate, that might be something we might be interested for the folks at home. Send a letter of interest if you would. Right now, we just need to reappoint Pete Hubble as chair period ending two thousand and twenty-three. And I so moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. You all did Community Preservation Fund at the last meeting, so we won't tackle that one. Can we go to Communications? No, Communications Committee, we'll need to come back to that one at the twenty-third meeting, same complete streets. The CAC, could we go to the Conservation Advisory Committee for you?
Yeah, Pink Hillen, people to appoint, reappoint here are Stephen and Lori as the chair.
Okay.
I don't think they was continuing.
Okay. Would you like to make that motion?
Yeah. So a motion to appoint Stephen Atkins Elder to your appointment ending in two thousand and twenty-four.
And to continue, Laura Euston as the chair for period ending two thousand and twenty-three.
I think Mike's going to go on, so.
It doesn't matter. We can go a bit along with a lot.
I'll move the vote.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Design Review. We did hear back on Design Review.
Chris Koberger is free to serve as chair for the year and ticket to your appointment. And I'm a major.
And then we major as well. Would you like to make that motion, though?
I'd like to do it.
Okay. And I second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. We'll come back to Disaster Preparedness. Economic Development Committee, can we tackle that on the twenty-fifth? Are we ready to do that now? Okay, I don't think so. Energy, we are ready to do energy. So I would like to move that we reappoint Dennis Polley, Jen Kavanaugh, Laura Euston, Paul Caddens of Mansky to two-year terms ending in two thousand and twenty-four. And Dennis Polley as a chair ending in two thousand and twenty-three.
And Dan Smith.
And Dan Smith has resigned. He resigned a while ago. This last year, hook. Yeah. And is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Rubber clarification for vacancy was this two thousand and seventeen and only one of those appointments currently is two thousand and twenty-three. Will that be, are they offset from the rest of the committee?
Yes, so that will be, that vacancy when filled will be a two thousand and twenty-three term. So there'll be some staggering on that committee. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
And the secretary is Frances Duncan, so that change should be. Ethics Board. Are we ready to Ethics Board or shall we table that to next meeting?
I think we can reappoint Brian Kelly as the chair for ending in two thousand and twenty-three. I'll move to do that.
Okay. I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Greenway and Trails.
Sorry, just on Ethics, there's Gail Nussbaum. Looks like the term is.
Yeah, I haven't checked with her yet, so I'll do that.
We're not ready for that. Yeah. Okay. Greenway and Trails.
They're all set.
They are, yeah. So would you like to make the motion to reappoint Melissa Cohen, Kath Viera, and Lisa Will on as chair?
Yes, I would.
You did a very nice job of doing that. And I'd like to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Housing Committee, we don't need to do anything about that, although.
We have two people to appoint.
Oh, already? Wow. Two more.
Alleged Julie.
Okay, very good.
So we would like to appoint Michael Cole and Hayden Searchworth. And I hadn't given any thought to which of those.
I think we want to put Hayden at the two thousand and twenty-five year because he is going to be the liaison typically. So I'll do that. And then Michael for the one for.
Twenty twenty-four. Well, that's wonderful. Dare I ask if we figured out who we want to chair that committee or?
We will be back to you.
Yeah, we'll be back. Yeah, okay. No, I think this is so impressive that you've so quickly, you know, gotten. Where are we now? Nine?
Nine.
Nine members.
And more people attending the meetings.
And more people. Wonderful. And hopefully, we'll have some good news on housing coming up in the near future. Some exciting.
I guess with Julia, I'll second that.
Very good. Further discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, I T F is not currently operating. Local Waterfront Revitalization. At this point, all we can do is reappoint Paula as chair. And then it's going to morph a little bit into an ongoing committee, which is slightly different than the planning committee. Yeah, that's what we've heard.
Yeah, we have to keep it active through the adoption.
Through the adoption. Okay.
By the state.
Okay, so all we need to do to keep all those members current is just reappoint Paula. I see the terms of two thousand and twenty-three for everybody else. So would you like to make that motion, Christine?
I will make that motion.
Okay. We can't thank Paula enough for all her hard work on this. And I so moved. I so second that. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm trying to get a good motion. Planning Board, so we received word from Sam Phalen that he would like to have appointed Maxine Coleman to the Planning Board. That would be a period ending two thousand and twenty-five. That's the vacancy. Although we have Brian Kelly as well, two thousand and twenty-seven, with his moving out of town, so we have that.
I want to put her in two thousand and twenty-seven.
You want to put her in two thousand and twenty-seven? Okay. If that works, thoughts, folks, if you want to put her on that slot? Okay. Who would like to make that motion?
I will make the motion.
Okay, very good. To appoint Maxine Coleman to the Planning Board for a period term ending two thousand and twenty-seven. I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I notice we have a holdover with Christine now.
Yes. I have to double-check with Sam on that. I didn't see that.
Okay.
I didn't specifically ask about that.
You didn't ask that one. Okay. Obviously, we'd like to reappoint Sam as the chair, but we have to reappoint him so that he can continue to conduct planning for the business. And I so moved that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, we're moving along, folks. Thanks for your patience. We're getting there. Recreation Commission. At this point, we need to reappoint Doug Struinsky, Shannon Miller, and Doug Struinsky as chair. And I would make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I think Bill got in there. All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Red Church Cemetery Committee.
We just need a chair.
We just need a chair. John Kim is really the chair. But let's talk to him about having the title. St. Margaret's, we're still working on that. Senior Services, we're working on that. Tree Preservation, Jacob.
trees supervisor.
Yes.
Can you please tell me who at the Recreation Commission that you reappointed, just Doug Struinsky?
Shannon Miller.
Okay.
And Doug as chair. I apologize, were we going a little too fast?
Yes. Thanks.
With the new tree preservation.
And these are all for two thousand and twenty-four? And then, yeah, both two thousand and twenty-four.
And Doug as chair. Obviously, the chair isn't just one.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Deanna. Okay, Tree Preservation, Jacob.
We can do the next meeting.
Next meeting?
Yeah.
Nothing with the others.
Water Board, so we did hear, let's keep Hank. And Phil, I think, just circle to them, right?
Yep.
So you want to make that motion? I think we have Jerry, Phil, Hank, Evelyn, right? All for reappointments.
Well, I was waiting for an email back from Doreen. She had sent emails to Phil and Evelyn.
Oh, Hank confirmed.
Oh, he did?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, then he sent it to me, so. All right, well, then we're good.
Okay, and Hank as chair, obviously.
Yeah, I move to reappoint him.
Okay, very good. So, Deanna, that's Jerry, Phil, Hank, Evelyn for periods ending two thousand and twenty-four. And two thousand and twenty-three for Hank as chair of the Water Board.
Thanks.
Okay, Z B A. We have two things to do with the Z B A. One is to reappoint Kate. And also Chris Close, his term is a five-year term. He's on the Board of Appeals. And I so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? No in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's the last one that I'm going to be doing tonight. Thank you all for your patience as we do our annual reorg. And thanks to all the volunteers and the many committees who were not able to do the kind of work that we can without you. Okay, moving on to the second item on the agenda. For the folks at home, it's Resolution Number Two. It's to approve highway expenditures for two thousand and twenty-three. And we received from our Highway Superintendent the list of roads and the nature of the improvements for the roads for the folks at home. And this is also subject to change, you know, when we go out to bid. Occasionally, we add or subtract depending on market prices. And so right now, the thinking is that there'll be work done on North Drive, Old Route one ninety-nine, Penn Off Drive, Sycomore Drive, Brokeby Extension, Dock Road, Station Hill Road. There will also obviously be repairs and so on and so forth. Also, there's some chip ceiling that's going to be done on Orlick Road between Yance and Stone Church. Oh, that's Yance, sorry. Yance between Orlick and Stone Church. I said that backwards. And also for Norton Road between Orlick and Stone Church. Any questions? Teresa, did you want to add anything to that?
No, do you have the copies? Okay. That's it.
Okay. Very good. Fifty thousand dollars for general repairs, one hundred and eighty-four point eight hundred thousand for those permanent improvements, another thirty-five thousand for. And these are all estimates at the moment for Yance Road and then another thirty-five thousand for Norton. I'd like to move Resolution Number Two. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jacob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Teresa. Moving right along, Resolution to Approve Contract, Sawkill Bridge. I'd like to thank Jacob and Jen Kavanaugh and others, our town attorney, and all the work involved in advancing this project. This is the replacement of the Sawkill Bridge on Aspen Wall Road. We applied for and received a grant for ninety-five percent of the funding. This project is estimated to cost somewhere in the neighborhood one point six million dollars, of which the town taxpayers will only have to pay a small portion of that. Hopefully, we'll. Hopefully, when we go out to bid, that, you know, the estimates are in line with what the actual costs are. We went through a rigorous process where we solicited expressions of interest from many firms. We received, I believe, seven or eight. And we interviewed, we narrowed it down, and we interviewed three firms. And then made a final selection of this one particular firm who we have worked with in the past, actually with the sidewalk project here when I first started back in 2016, '17. And that is Hudson Valley Engineering Associates. We've negotiated an amount that falls within the guidelines for preliminary engineering and right-of-way work. And this is Resolution Number Three. Is there any question, folks, or comments before we go ahead and entertain it? We would not, just for the folks at home. We do not expect construction on this bridge to happen in 2023. It's more likely that it will happen in 2024. There will be public input, and that process will happen before any final design and the project and construction commences. So we recognize that this is sort of a special bridge. We don't have that many bridges that are under our purview here in the town. And this is one that has a strong aesthetic nature. And, you know, we would be looking to ensure that that continues after reconstruction. Okay. Resolution Number Three, an I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. And this resolution approves the contract with Hudson Valley Engineering Associates for an amount not to exceed $267,000. Further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay. Moving right along, next up on the agenda. Health insurance plans. Have you all had a chance to take a look at the various options for the plans? And did you get a chance to have a couple phone calls with our administrator or broker to discuss the pros and cons of the various plans? Right now, we've got the Silver Eight MVP. You know, it's tough to compete with that plan because it provides for the employees 100% of all the copays and deductibles. And that is a part of the compensation that we offer them. The out-of-pockets are higher than any of the other plans. There are a couple that are competitive. Then you start to run into the, you know, where you can go, the service area, coverage area.
And now to the deductible.
And deductibles.
Deductibles, of course, you know, the town is funding all the deductibles, but with the HRA up to the limit. Well, my recommendation would be that we stick with the current plan. I think it's worked well for the employees. I know that it's something that they have, you know, they feel strongly about. Coverage with that plan is tough.
Robert, one thing that I had a hard time deciphering in the paperwork was just what the percentage change is in the cost of that plan relative to...
Sure, yeah. If you look at the... Patrick, could you go to... I guess if I can get that page, what? No, what? What? No, no. No, no.
Which page?
It should be near the top. Did you get past it before I... Yeah, before I... There we go, keep going. All right, now we're going to have to blow these up, Patrick. Let's get to the first page. The one we're looking for, and unfortunately, they don't send us these with page numbers, but the one that we're looking for has the MVP current plan. And the next column says MVP renewal plan.
It's the last one.
It's the last one.
Yep, there you go. I think that's it. So if you take a look, Julia, to your question.
Yeah.
The premiums are 6% higher than they were last year, which, by the way, for the folks at home is the lowest we've had in the seven years that I've been here. Or eight years that I've been here. I think when I first started, we had 21%, 15%, 15%, 9%, 8% and change. And this is the lowest, six, on the premiums. We make some assumptions with the deductibles that the town will be covering depending upon utilization. It could attract somewhere around 60%. We'd be looking at an increase in expense of about 7%. All other things being equal. We do have an increase of one employee who will have coverage. So, you know, that is...
On top.
Yeah. That is not factored into it. But if you compare the two plans with the number of employees, you'll see that the increase is proposed to be about 7% equal of the...
Thank you.
All right. And the annual deductible unfortunately has gone up from $3,900 for individual to $4,400 and $8,800 for a couple or a family. Any thoughts? We okay with sticking with this type of line?
Yes, yep.
Okay, great. So I'd like to make a motion. Let me go ahead and we approve for the year, March 1st, 23, plan year continuation of the MVP Silver Eight HSA plan. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye, thank you very much. Okay, moving right along. Next item on the agenda. Okay, so trying to advance the proverbial wall so that we can get and collect as much information to make the best decisions regarding drainage and how we might be able to assist the residents of Forest Park. And in particular, those that are experiencing and have been experiencing drainage issues for quite some time now. So Ryan, do you want to walk us through what your proposal is on this next step?
Sure. We've provided a proposal to the town for design services to take what was our preliminary hydraulic assessment of the community and take them to some constructible projects that could actually be implemented on the road. It's really a two-part proposal. We also provided the town survey costs to have those right-of-way surveyed. You can remember some of the comments we've received from the public as there's concern about what's happening with it in the right-of-way, protection of existing utilities in the field. So that survey will really help us identify where those things like water lines and utility overhead electric lines are and how we may be impacting driveways. So that survey will lay out the right-of-way, make sure all of our improvements are staying in the right-of-way, make sure we're avoiding utilities, and will allow us to design off of. Once we receive that survey, the task order we provided the town is to do an alternatives analysis, understanding that there's some competing interests in the community. We wanted to take a look at a couple different ways we could collect stormwater and provide the town some opinions of probable cost for each one of those designs and come back into the board and kind of present that as an opportunity to discuss what our options are with a recommendation on what our preferred or what our recommendation would be to proceed with. After that alternatives analysis, which is a task one of this proposal, we would move on to, and obviously, with the idea that the town would pick which option we'll move forward with, we'll go with a 60% design set that we provide to everybody. The 60% design set would include some details, a little more information, and would allow us to go through the SEACR process for the project and move towards working out some of those details for the public. After we've completed task two, we'd move to task three of the design process, which would be to kind of finalize some of those design details, put together full construction plans and specifications for the project with the idea that we would be ready to go out to bid if it was going to go to a contractor or if the town was going to do that work. That proposal's been provided to town, I think, last week early. And, you know, obviously, just looking for some feedback from the town on how they'd like to proceed and if they had any questions on the proposal. The survey, by the way, guys, is, you know, we just, we're going to have the surveyor mark the water line out. I know the water line's been a big concern, and we've received some emails on that. So as part of that process, we'll have the surveyor called DigSafe. They'll mark the line out, and then the surveyor will pick up that line. So we'll make sure to not hit any of our services or our main line going through there. Make sense?
Absolutely. Yeah. Okay, well, we need more information. This is the only way we're going to get the information, is we do the survey work, if we start to understand, you know, what's within our authority, what's within our boundaries. And then we can take a look at some of the options. Obviously, we need to, you know, keep communicating with the residents there. Some of the residents have, you know, particular ideas on how best to work with the properties. And obviously, you know, even if it is within our right-of-way alongside the roadway, you know, they have opinions about what they'd like to see there because, you know, it's right on the front of, you know, or in front of their lawn. So I think it's important we get all this information, and then we can make some decisions from there.
The one thing that was in the survey, Robert, I'm not sure, the survey proposal, was that we provided it in options. So we provided an option for Scope A, which was the collection areas, as we had discussed in our previous, and then we broke out the downstream improvements. I will tell you, from our experience, that Scope B tends to go up if we wait a year or so to do it, and the surveyors got to come back out and do that at a separate time. But obviously, we want to provide the town the option to do that in pieces.
Yeah, no, I think we need to do it all, and let's get all the information at the same time while we can. And then we'll be able to make, or at least try to make the best possible decision to help this situation.
Great.
Okay. Folks, are we ready to approve this task order and get some more information on the drainage issues and infrastructure and survey and so forth?
I'm sorry, is there a question?
Sure.
Are we going to appropriate another $28,000 to do further study? Is that the idea?
We are.
Okay.
We, well, it's more than studies. So we're doing...
Would we be considering, like, bioswales or anything that would work in conjunction with in-street drainage? So that where it's possible for the homeowner to absorb and process some their stormwater when it gets over flooded, then the drainage system in the road can take over to kind of make it a two-part solution because the open swale wasn't... And bioswales are less intrusive because they don't have to go so deep into the ground. The pipe is buried, and you're just approving the amount of water the ground can absorb. You're not necessarily sending it anywhere.
Did you want to address the question?
Sure. I think in our design alternatives analysis, we would be open to considering all opportunities. A bioswale, for example, you know, may not be at the top of our list for consideration only because so many of the people in the area have provided survey information that they're struggling getting the groundwater out of the ground, and they're trying to keep their basements dry. So reintroducing it back to the ground could be problematic for that community. But there's certainly best manager practices that we could try and implement along the roadway to help...
Maybe not even along the roadway, but on someone's property that eventually would drain into them when the ground becomes flooded. And the property owner can no longer absorb any water. Then where does it go?
I think we would have to consult with the town's attorney about what type of improvements we could provide where. But certainly, we would do the best to manage what we can on the roadway as far as providing private improvement.
It just doesn't seem that the solution is going to work if you're only concerned about what the roadway does.
Well, just understand, Gerard, we are limited to what we can do. So we're responsible for perhaps the water that's on the roadway to make sure that it gets off of the roadway. Where we get a little bit hamstrung is we can't then go start to provide improvements. It's a really sort of loose way of implementing that term to individual residents because what we're using is collective taxpayer dollars. So now, as we maybe discussed earlier in previous meetings, there are options to create drainage districts, just like you have water and sewer districts, and then those users can contribute towards those improvements. You know, we'd like to see if there's something that we can do that will help both the road and the residents at the same time before we get to that point, but that is always an option. And so if there are enough residents come forward interested in that, creating a drainage district, of course, we would do everything we could to help advance that.
How do I get people together to request a drainage district?
Well, you know, that is something that I think we did discuss, right? When we had our info session, we brought that topic up. But, yeah, we could, I could maybe, you know, get a little research together. And if you, as an ambassador for the area, want to, you know, discuss that with the community, fine. Let's get some more information first. I find that a lot of times, these info sessions are more helpful, the more data and information you have. And then we can, as I said to you, I think, in the past, you know, the more we can find out, the better. We'll make sure that you're always involved in the process and keep the emails and any communications coming because that only helps us make a better decision. It isn't always the decision that everybody wants, you know, in a community of 10-plus thousand. But we'll do our best to make sure that all the options are available, and you understand what's involved with that.
And then the implied easements. How do we get the funding and the time from the town attorney to even look into that? That sounds like a separate problem from this. The implied easements between Apple Tree and Birchwood and along that there, and then between Birchwood and Edgewood, there's implied easements that were never fully documented, but they do provide drainage. And how do we move that? Sounds like a separate project.
Chris, did you want to address that?
Well, so I think we're going to be following the engineer's guidance in terms of how they develop the proposed solutions. And then from there, we'll look at whether he has, you know, existing easements or whether there are other access rights that we think we'd have, and we'll evaluate that. But I don't want to try to get into evaluating all possibilities. I'd rather focus on, you know, what does the engineer say we need or what's his preferred path? And then we can look and see what we need for that.
Well, but shouldn't we make sure that those easements are looked into as part of the beginning of this plan? Since they might be very complicated.
It's chicken and egg. I need to have the engineers go through a best path analysis for where they think this should go. And then we can look at, you know, do we have those rights now? Do we need to acquire something? What do we need to do? So we really need to start with this.
The service was provided when the development was developed. It should be working right now. It shouldn't even have to be the engineer to decide. It should just be working.
Okay, but it isn't. So, you know, whatever was done to engineer that at the time that it was done, you know, I think that some of the discussion that the engineers have had earlier is that it doesn't meet what you would do today, right? So... So what they're trying to do is what can be done to retrofit, at least first from the right-of-way perspective, and then, you know, if you all want to consider some further improvements that would require a drainage district, that's something that we can also look at, you know, down the line.
What we did do is, yes, that's a hundred percent correct. What we did do was in scope A of that survey, we asked the surveyor to proceed up to where there's existing infrastructure, so that we will have some deep research in that area. We didn't ask them to proceed any further, lay out any potential future easements or anything like that. Where there was existing infrastructure, there was some modifications proposed, and so we wanted to make sure we picked up that in the initial phase. So they are going to do a little bit of deep research in those areas. Yep.
I have a question for Ryan, which is just about the, I mean, obviously, there, I was also going to say the chicken and egg. Chris, like, there are a lot of pieces of information that are missing in order to be able to, like, choose a decision path.
Sure.
Do you think, certainly, the survey makes sense, and the sort of scoping out of alternatives and concepts makes sense. Do you think it's possible that you could get partway, like, say, through task one, and then realize that actually we want to pursue some kind of a different option, whether it's a drainage district or something else, and then suddenly we're, you know, we're needing to modify task two and task three? Or do you think that everything that is scoped here is sort of like background research that will be useful regardless?
I think likely that there may be a divergent point where we talk about maybe a drainage district, and depending on what the improvements are, I think we will end up doing task two and task three in some shape or form, whether that gets amended based on the, on the survey and the information we obtained from that meeting with the public. And there are different options. It's possible, and it's possible we do like a right-of-way project, which would fall under this proposal, and then, you know, a drainage district, which takes care of some of these private property issues that we're having in that community. But I think inevitably, we end up doing some form of task two and task three for this site, the two sites.
So we could ask you to come back and give us an interim report as you progress through those tasks?
Yeah. Yep. I would have.
An update.
I think after task one is the time we would come in front of the board and present those options. We'll probably lay out a couple of drawings, just so the public can see what we're proposing, what the two options are.
Okay.
Okay?
Right.
Cool.
The more we know. All right.
Did you go down there?
I would make a motion to approve the task order. Also, I noticed the survey portion wasn't in here, but also approve that as well, so that goes hand in hand.
Maybe one of the more expensive, option B.
Yes, option B, exactly. All right, so move. Is there a second?
Second. Look at me. She said first.
All in favor? Thank you very much. Okay. We'll be in touch. Thank you. Stay in touch. Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. Okay, so just information on association of towns, update on some of the courses that are being offered. If I plan to attend, anybody else giving some thought about attending? Bill, you can go. Okay, anybody else?
It's possible.
Away? Possible?
I need to look at my calendar, whether we are around. It starts on the nineteenth of Sunday.
It's the holiday weekend.
Yeah.
President.
Yeah, I'm going to be traveling for a wedding on the evening, so I don't know if I'll be, like, on the way back. We can get dropped off in Manhattan or.
You don't want to bring the bride and groom to continue.
They're going on a honeymoon on Sunday, so.
For local, local, okay. If it's okay with you, could we designate, if this is just a designation? I intend to be there as the voting delegate, and I would ask Bill to name the alternate, since he's indicated he's going to be going. Is that okay with you all?
Yes.
I would like to make that motion to designate myself as Bill's alternate. Thank you, Julia. Second?
Aye.
All in favor? And there are countless courses. This is for the folks at home. This is an opportunity where we meet with representatives throughout New York State, the townships. There are over six hundred, nine hundred townships in New York State, the smallest of one, smallest of which is Red House. It's Red House. Last, I looked at thirty-eight inhabitants. Okay. I believe that concludes the agenda items. We are going to entertain, before we say goodnight to folks, a motion to go into attorney-client session. I want to thank you all for coming tonight, for the folks at home. A reminder, once again, we're doing everything we can to bring government to you, and so please sign up for notifications on the town website, only on topics you're interested in, if you so choose, and we'll keep you abreast of what's going on. Okay. Good night. Stay healthy. Happy New Year, everyone.
You too.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to go into attorney-client. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? And we shall return if we take any action.